And this is the July 1st meeting of the Radnor Township Planning Commission. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. First thing on the agenda after the pledge is the minutes of the June 3rd, 2019, meeting. There have been, there were some corrections made to them that Lane picked up on. I think we're looking at a copy that has those edits. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the May 6th, 2019, meeting? Any second?
All in favor?
Aye.
They're all adopted?
Now, the, according to the, the agenda, 236 North Aberdeen Avenue is first, but I've been asked if we would take the gas blower discussion first. I'm understanding it's going to be very brief. So, let's, I understand there's a representative from the Board of Health present. If you'd like to come on up, please.
Thank you very much, John. I'm Linda Chaney. I'm the Chair of the Board of Health. And with me tonight is...
David Simmons. I'm a member of the Board of Health.
He's our Vice Chair. So, I just wanted to take a minute. I think, I don't know if you got our proposal for the gas leaf blower? Does everybody have that in front of you?
Yeah, we do have it.
Okay. And then, there was a PowerPoint as well for reference. So, just to give you a little background real quickly, we wanted to bring this to the Planning Commission. As the Board of Health, we wanted to recommend the regulation of gas leaf blowers. This proposal was passed by the Board of Health several months ago. And, we just wanted to give you a little background. The performance of the lawn maintenance and leaf removal by professional lawn services is already prohibited on Sundays in Radnor Township. There is documented evidence concerning health hazards associated with older model gas blowers, specifically high noise level dispersal of particulate matter when blown up and breathed in. It's also, as well as gas and oil emissions are all hazards to both the homeowner and the community at large. The Board of Health has reviewed various strategies for reducing health risks and recommends that the Board of Commissioners regulates the gas leaf blowers, but I was asked to bring in here first. Our recommendation is three points. So, the use of only model year 2007 or newer gas blowers producing 65 decibels of noise or less, we recommend. The use be restricted between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. That the use of electric lawn equipment or manual methods of removing leaves be promoted. So, we're just hoping that you would look at this and give removal or approval and some questions, that sort of thing. So, we wanted to bring it forward.
Thank you. Does staff have any questions or comments? I'm sorry, not the staff, the members of the Commission.
Yeah. I, just to set some context, the Board of Commissioners had this on their agenda on May 20th, but it was a four-hour-plus meeting and they stuck it on the end of the agenda.
Correct.
And I think you guys were there for a time, but you left. And so, when they brought this up, Commissioner Nagel, who was sort of the point person on it, sort of explained it, what its intent was. And, the Commission was, there was some confusion on the part of Commissioner Borowski, for one, who read this as Sundays would restrict all residents from using any lawn, any gas blowers.
Correct.
And that is not what you're asking for here.
No, not at all.
Okay. But that, I just wanted to set the context. So, the Board of Commissioners, they said, their reaction to this was, "Let planning flesh this out." So, here's, here's the deal. Like, I read through the handout. And, after I read through the handout, I, I'm convinced that if you have any gas leaf blowers, you should never use them. And you should not allow them to be used, as California has done in some towns. But, what you're asking for is a lot less than what the handout indicates in terms of health hazards and risks. That would also be associated with electric tools, blowers, because the particulate matter, they're going to blow particulate matter around. Their, the electric mowers are 90 decibels, some of them. And it's a high wind, so it's actually more harmful to the air than the gas blower. All the other types of power tools that are gas-powered, like, I have a weed rocker that's very loud. I have a riding tractor that's probably 80 decibels at full force. So, this, you're, you're not, to me, you're just, you're taking one little piece of equipment and you're, and you're, and you're, and you're introducing what you want through something that actually says, "A lot of different gas and electric tools are not safe." So, it just feels like it doesn't agree, the presentation and what you're asking for, to me, doesn't seem like it agrees with itself very well. And, I also know that, you know, that our code says 7:00 a.m. is the start time for people doing lawn service work. And you're asking for 8:00, so that's, that's an ordinance change that is going to affect a lot of businesses, because they start at 7:00. And, I don't get any sense here that this is something that could be policed in any way, because I, I don't know if it could be, but it doesn't seem like you're asking for that. You're asking for people to just be more thoughtful about how they approach...
So, you're right. I think it's going to be extremely hard to enforce this, but it's something...
But it just seems to me that the narrowness of this is a mistake. Like, if you, if you got one shot to go at the Board of Commissioners, to get something like this done, to just pick one piece of equipment, because my backpack blower is 65, until I turn it up full, and then it's 119. So, it's, that's all I'm saying. It's just, it just seemed like, I thought there would be more ask if you're going to, if this, if this is true.
So, I think you've hit all the hot-button issues, but it feels to me a little bit like it's, it's, you've taken two sides. We did confine ourselves. First, our proposal has nothing to do, really, with the, the timing of restriction of contractor work. That's already township ordinance, and we're not recommending any change in township ordinance in that regard, with regard to the leaf blower proposal. So, let's take that out of there. Whatever the township ordinance is, we're not recommending a change. Okay? You do raise the question of enforcement, and having ordinances that you don't enforce is problematic, but not our area of expertise. So, that's number one. Number two, I could not be in greater agreement that there are a lot of different pieces of equipment that are used, and that gas blowers are only one of them. The, the reason gas blowers were chosen is, actually antedates both of us, and I don't know why that would be, but our feeling was that the more that we confine ourselves to achievable's, the better off we would be. Number three, the fine particulates, I don't know how you get around the fine particulates. If you're going to blow leaves, you're going to have the fine particulates, and I don't know how you get around that. But the bigger issue, I think, is to be consonant with movements that we've already taken in the township around the Radnor 100 program and around, I, I think the volatiles and the movement from gas to electric in these kinds of devices is a good one. So, we confine ourselves to the blowers. We could certainly go back and look at other, other devices. But, I, I think that the noise pollution probably has more to do with timing and, and the, the amount of hours of the week and the amount of days of the week that you allow, and we're not trying to take that on. So, our notion was that if we confine ourselves to gas blowers and simply asked that for contractors, we have people compliant with essentially Code of Federal Regulation that was established in 2007. It's not a big ask, and it, and it's a start. And we did not really address beyond contractors, but we could certainly talk about whether or not we wanted everybody in the township to come up to code, including the township itself. But we didn't really address that. We just addressed with contractors. There's an awful lot of contractor work out there, and we felt that, I, I don't know that it's a one-shot affair, but we thought that if we came at this, confining ourselves to clearly definables, that we would have the best chance.
How did you choose the time, 8:00 to 6:00? I mean, contractors start their work...
So, let's take the time off the table. That's, that is not, this is not about restriction of time. There is already an ordinance that, that limits the time of contractor work, and there's already an ordinance that restricts contractor work, not private citizen work, on Sundays.
Right, I understand, but you wrote it on here.
Yeah, that's...
So, this is your list. It's got dates and times.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you're going to have to at least give me an answer for why you picked 8:00 to 6:00. Like, what is it that goes on at 7:00 that's more dangerous than 8:00? Children going to school, that sort of thing. People out in the community in the morning. We thought 7:00 was early. You've done some research to find out that it's busier between 7:00 and 8:00 than between 8:00 and 9:00? I have not done research. Okay.
So, we don't really, I, I would confine the science that calls the Board of Health Act to the notion of coming to code on gas leaf blowers to a 2007 code. And we are not wed to any particular time. We would be flexible. We are not about the enforcement. So, I don't know how it would be enforced, but we could work with the Commission, the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission to try and flesh that out. But we are certainly not bound to a particular set of hours, and I have no data to tell you that 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. is any better or worse than 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Don't have data.
So, ultimately, what are you asking for, then? Because it seems to differ a little bit from what's in front of us. So, moving forward, if the community would be aware of newer models, more than 2007, not to use the gas leaf blowers before 8:00 o'clock, and even in the township, maybe looking at our own equipment, ensuring that it's up to code and follows these standards.
I have, I have a couple of thoughts. I'm, I'm actually in agreement. I, I think that a lot of leaf blower maintenance is detrimental and not necessarily useful for most parts of the year. But I think if the Board were to consider a regulation against leaf blowers, it would have to be simple, it would have to be easily enforceable, and it would have to be very easy to educate about. And I think, right now, as it stands, it's none of those things, but it could be. I think you would have to potentially pick between noise and particulate, because that would give you a differentiation between whether you're going against all lawn equipment or whether you're going against leaf blowers. And so, I think trying to combine those two as reasoning doesn't make the most sense to get an ordinance. The second thing is, I know probably over 100 cities, different municipalities have already enacted
Right. And we did see all that.
Leaf blower bans.
Right.
And most of these started as grassroots initiatives, neighborhood groups, things like that. So, I think if we want, if, if anybody would want this to gain traction in the township, it might be important to kind of educate first, and then follow up with a recommendation based on the education and the feedback. I think that would be...
So, we did do that at the Board of Health. So, we...
You did.
Read it all this, talked about it, and came up with this. But if we need to further refine it, certainly we'd be willing to take direction and feedback as to how to do this and move it forward. Because, like you said, a lot of municipalities throughout the United States have enacted something similar.
Right. And, and I think in, in a lot of cities where this is enacted, their maintenance requirements are, are different than this township. So, a lot of cities have street sweeping to clean up particulate matter and leaves during certain times of the year. We don't have regular street sweeping, and so, there, there are things that leaf blowers, especially in the fall, are, are a key part of the maintenance regime of most people's fall cleanup. And that is to prevent stormwater problems.
Right.
So, I think we would have to look specifically at the township. That would be one thing. Talk to, to them about the maintenance requirements and what might make sense. Maybe it's a partial ban during the year, but allowed at some times. And definitely education, because without education first, there, there will be no way to enforce this.
So, when you say education, more research around this, or educating the public?
Just coming up with an education plan, I think, would be helpful. If you, if we would want to start by banning contractors from using leaf blowers, then we would, then you would have to come up with a plan to educate those contractors.
Well, nobody's saying to ban the contractors. Nobody's going down that road.
But, I mean, it, it makes sense as a first step, and then a second step might be phasing it out to the township. But all these things need to be thought about, I think.
Yes. So, I, I'm, I would have difficulty getting behind a full ban on, on many of these pieces of equipment, because we have a leafy area, and it is a huge amount of labor, and getting the leaves cleaned up is also important for different people to different extents. Our, our reason for restricting, for being very restrictive, was just that. The notion that if we could simply, I'm sorry, I don't know what that's doing, but if we could simply start with trying to decrease some of the volatile pollution by getting leaf blowers up to code, then maybe we go to gas mowers up to code, and we expand. But I could not agree more with you that the best thing might be an awareness across the township. If, because we have no desire to impose any legal restrictions on the citizens of the township that they don't want. If the township doesn't want to restrict these activities, we're not pushing them on it. But, I do agree that the Board of Health might have a role in educating the township on the fact that simply having guys come out and use equipment hours each day that burns gas, that is the equivalent of having a traffic jam on the Blue Route from Route 3 to Route 76, with everybody sitting there idling, that's probably pretty close to the equivalent of air pollution. And that if we behave in a rational way, maybe we can find a way to...
Right.
To, to do better.
And I think enforcement-wise, it's actually going to be more impactful if we educate first. People can educate their own contractors, and then maybe there's less of a need for, for an actual ordinance.
So, is there, is there somebody in, on this Commission who would want to work with representation from the Board of Health to try and come up with a program that, I don't think this is emergent. If we do nothing, we do nothing. We have the same thing we have. If we figure out a way that we can bring better health to our township by figuring out what can we do and how can we enact it, I think that we do a service to the township.
If you're looking for volunteers, I'm not sure that anybody's going to leap up into your laps right away. But we're going to take into consideration everything that you've said. I think there's been some great comments here. This is, at first blush, when I read this over, I thought, "Oh, this seems like a pretty good idea," you know?
Well, I was actually shocked, to be perfectly honest, when I read this information.
But then, after I read it over a little more closely, I began to realize that there's a zillion questions into this thing. It's just not very cut and dry.
And there's a really big impact to a lot of people, and not just on the positive side of, yes, we all have health concerns and we all want to make our environment healthy, but this impacts a lot of businesses. And there has to be time to allow changes to happen, and also ways that they can make these changes without losing their businesses. Right. Because the problem is, is that you've got so many people around here that use lawn services that we have a plethora of them because they're needed. And they deal with exactly what you talk about, stormwater management, removing debris, getting it so our systems aren't clogged. And what happens when they're restricted to certain hours of the day, and they can't, they can't even get to your house? It, it just creates an awful conundrum. And I just feel like, if you're going to restrict some of these situations, you have to provide other positive ways to deal with them, instead of just taking away their livelihood and not providing them with options. So, I think that it, there needs to be a balance. We want to make it better for those who have some serious health concerns, but we also want to make sure that our neighbors, our neighborhood stays clean, our streets stay clean, and our businesses don't go out of business. Right. Thank you. Thank you for your feedback.
No, sir.
So, how do we proceed? Can, can we find somebody from this Commission to work with us to get something acceptable to this Commission that the Board of Health can help to move forward, and we can bring to the Board of Commissioners? And maybe it's, well, we decide to do nothing. But I, I believe that doing nothing is probably not the best.
Well, I think there's been a lot of concerns that have been raised here this, this evening, okay? In a very brief period of time. I think that should be an indication to you that you need to do a little bit more research, a little bit more thinking about this. I think you may want to look at other townships that are very similar to ours in terms of having huge amounts of trees and lots and lots of leaves, to see how they've handled the problem. Cities handle it one way, as Megan has pointed out. I'm not sure that those types of options are available to us out here. Maybe we should expand our program, the Township Leaf Collection Program, which seems to get the leaves up and out without having to spread them all over the place. I think there's some very interesting dichotomies here, in the sense, again, as Megan pointed out, what are we going to emphasize, noise pollution or particulate pollution? I mean, you lower to decibels, but you still have that stuff up in the air.
Right.
So, what have you really solved? And, every time you open up the newspaper, there's more information regarding people having asthma, having all sorts of other issues. Well, reducing noise pollution isn't going to help that. So, I think these are the things you've got to start selling. So, the education program and getting that out to the public so that the support can be there is more important than whether or not one of us jumps on the bandwagon and helps you fashion something, because I think you need to have a little bit more substance that we can work with, and that's what you've got to start doing.
Okay. Well, that, definitely well-taken. So, I think we got our point. So, I think the idea of reaching out to surrounding communities and getting some data and figuring out our course of action. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
It looks like Nick went outside, but if somebody wants to go get him. 326 North Aberdeen is next on the agenda.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight.
Please make sure you give us your name, so the people at home, and, and your address here in the township.
My name's Kristy Flynn. I'm here tonight with my husband, Jamie, Jamie Flynn. We live at 236 North Aberdeen in Wayne. We've lived on North Aberdeen for 16 years now, and about 11 of those in this house here that we're talking about. We are here tonight because we have applied to your zoning hearing board for two variances to allow the subdivision of our property and construction of a new single-family home on the property. The two variances are for lot width and for front yard setback. And, that is because we would like to be able to preserve the existing home and build a new home. And then, the front setback is because the 25-foot setback that would be required by your ordinance would really be very different than the rest of the neighborhood, and would force us to sort of create a home that didn't really blend in with the neighborhood. So, our goal is really to do something that's sort of right for the whole street there. On this plan, you can see the existing home is here, and what we are proposing would be to do a shared drive between the existing home and the new home here. The shared drive, it's a sloped lot, so the, the drive would go down the slope to a garage in the basement rear of the new home. And then, we would create a parking pad for the existing home on the other side there. The, the zoning is R5 here. That would allow for a set of two twins. And in fact, the previous owners had applied for a subdivision to allow for development of two twins prior to our purchase of the property. They had received a recommendation for approval because it was by right. However, that required the demolition of the existing home, which, while not historic, is old and does have some, some value to the neighborhood, I would say. It was built by Jonathan Lengle, who was an architect that, and builder that had some history with the township, built a bunch of the important buildings in the township, like the library, the Saturday Club, the fire department, those sorts of things. So, this was a home that he built for his family back in 1888. And you have some information that we have from the Historic Society in your packet for that. So, we, we designed this plan wearily with the idea to preserve that home. And then, the other two important pieces, most important for this neighborhood, of course, are going to be parking, because many homes on our street do not have off-street parking. So, preserving on-street parking was important to us. That's why we proposed the shared drive. And then, stormwater is also very important, of course, because of the flooding that happens to the homes on the low side, on the other side of the creek here. This is, this is a creek in the back. So, we have stayed well below the limit of the impervious coverage area. And then, of course, it's lower than the previous plan had, had proposed by a fair bit. This would just be the first step, your recommendation for these variances. Once we have those variances, then we would be back before you with a minor subdivision plan to go through the process before you and then the Board of Commissioners. If you have any questions, I can share images, if that's helpful. I can go into more detail.
Yeah. Just anecdotally, what was it like when we had the tremendous rain the last couple of years? Does that, does your property get wet in the back, or...?
No. I can... Our property is high. It's, you might have a little trouble seeing, but the street is high, and then it slopes down. Right now, there's an existing drive that goes down. We park down in the back there. And then, you can see sort of this home here. That's a home that fronts onto Willow. So, our property is high, no question. We don't have any water concerns on our property, but we are very sensitive to the water concerns of our neighbors, of course.
Right. And the, across the street from you, there's like an apartment building?
There is.
And, how, how does that exist in R5? I mean, that neighborhood, to me, is, is a neighborhood of a lot of different styles, and there's twins, and there's, you know, there's, there's all sorts of different stuff. And it's, I'm just, you know, I'm just curious about, like, when you, when you talk about the, the look of the neighborhood. There's so many looks, you know, to me, but it's, was that just done...
I mean, the, the history on the street, we have a couple of neighbors who have lived on the street for a very long time. The history, that I understand, was that, that was a lot that was subdivided at some point prior to the current zoning. And, at the time, the apartments were allowed. Candidly, the maintenance of that building is not great for our street, and I'd be very happy if it was better maintained.
Are the, have you had any feedback from the neighbors about your plans, or not, or...?
Well, yeah. I've done a bunch of, sort of, talking to neighbors. I, I've knocked up a, a bunch of, a bunch of doors. Generally, the, the feedback has been positive. The concerns that I mentioned are, are, of course, the stormwater and the parking. I know that a couple of neighbors are here. They'd be happy to, they have something to say. I'm sure you'd be happy to hear it.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
With, you're asking for relief on the setback of, was it 25 feet?
Yes.
Right. You, you still have a tremendous backyard, a relative. So, what happens? Why, what's the rationale for just not pushing the entire building another 10 feet back?
Yeah. We certainly can. I guess we could. The rationale is, if you look at the first sheet... We had the, we had the fronts of the neighbors surveyed, and all of those are much closer than 25 feet. And, the rationale is that it wouldn't be the right thing for the neighborhood. It would force us to build a home that didn't really fit in. It's, it's not about getting a bigger backyard. It's about building a home that really looks good on the street and enhances that streetscape. None of the homes are pushed that far back by a long shot.
I agree with you. I think it should stay up closer.
How did you come, how did you decide to create the driveway? It looks like it's 12 feet in width, or is it actually a little bit, no, it looks like 12 feet for, for the part coming back. What's, it's wider than it is right now, correct?
It's, it is...
And actually, again, I'm thinking of impervious service. And I realize that you meet the, appears that you meet the criteria...
We do.
Or the standard.
Yes.
But, nonetheless...
That's sort of a modernization of the driveway that would let us, you know, sort of get out of the door and step onto the drive in those places in a nice way. It's to be shared, so it's just meant to be sort of navigable by, it's certainly not two ways, but it's just meant to be enough for the turning into both of those spaces. And it needs a little bit of correction, I would call it, from its current grade. It's graded very similar to what we're proposing now, but it's sort of too sharp when you go over the sidewalk, so it needs sort of the smoothing out so that it's a, you don't bottom out your car on it right now. So it's just really a modernization of that.
You've got Lot 1, Lot 2. The line running down the middle is, in fact, the property line, correct?
That's right, yes.
Okay.
So we propose an easement for the driveway, mutually beneficial.
Okay. And when you get to the back of your driveway, you're at about the topo mark, so it's 368 approximately, a little, in between 368 and 366, I guess that is.
Probably about 367 there, yeah.
Yeah, 67. Now, is that going to be built up? How do you account for the slope, or is it just going to go down the slope?
It will continue, the hill will continue down from there. It is built up from where it is currently by a little bit. But the grade will be smoothed so that the contours tie in farther down.
Well, I agree that the variances make sense, given the character of the street. You know, nothing there is, almost none of them are setback 25 feet. So I'm not sure how long that ordinance has been like that or why it happened. Maybe it's because of the houses on the next street up. I don't know. But I think that, I feel comfortable with the request. I mean, once you go into the subdivision part of this, I guess you'll be coming back here.
That's right.
So we can talk about perhaps some other modifications to the driveway. Anything that can help with stormwater management is something that would be looked on with great favor. Any other, any observations? Anything from staff?
No, sir.
So can we, can I have a motion? What's the sensitive board to approve, recommendation that zoning approved this?
Yes.
Okay. Is this something we actually need to vote on? Should we have a motion?
You do, because this will go to the zoning hearing board. So it would be good if we could have something formal from the...
Would someone care to make a motion, please?
I move that we recommend approval of the variance for the lot width and for the front yard setback.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next on the agenda is the petition of the Hampshire Family Partnership, amend in Chapter 280 of the Radnor Township zoning ordinance by establishing regulations for allowing rooftop dining within the Wayne overlay, the business overlay district. This was on last month's agenda. We had a lot of discussion about it. Our council has done a lot of work on it, and I think Nick has had discussions with council and with staff. So let's see where we are.
Steve and I had a lengthy conference call with Nick last week, and what we tried to do was get all, memorialize all of the comments that you made at the last meeting and try and work through them so that we could make recommendations on the comments that you made and amend the ordinance to reflect or at least explain why we weren't amending in accordance with your recommendations.
Mary, can I just interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely.
I think I made a little faux pas. We have to go back to the other, number three on the agenda, which is Aberdeen, 236 North Aberdeen. I failed to ask for public comment. I believe there are two people who are here who would like to comment publicly, so we're going to reopen that for discussion. Sorry, I apologize.
I understand. My name's James Seivos. Thanks for the opportunity to allow me to speak and express my opinion. I am a resident homeowner and neighbor, and I live parallel in, on 238 Willow Avenue. So I live right behind the Flins. And I'd like to express that I don't like the idea of subdividing the property and the variances that have been requested. That may be pending vote again for many reasons, but I'd like to focus on two that I'm most passionate about. And it was mentioned by the board around stormwater management, so that's one concern. And the other one is home values. So I'll start with home values first. So I'll start by saying that the reason why my wife and I, we live where we live, and this isn't my wife, she's not here today, this is just another neighbor, but my wife and I, we decided to purchase our home at 238 Willow Avenue because we valued it at a certain value, just like any other purchase of a home. There's value that you assess beyond the intrinsic value of a home. We decided, and the reason why we moved there and purchased the home is that we fell in love with the backyard. So it's a very unique situation to live on Willow Avenue where we are and to have so much open space behind our home. We love the privacy. We love the fact that it's quiet. It's very unique. In fact, it's the only property on the north side of Willow Avenue that actually has only one property touching on the backyard. So it is unique, and I would say we value it higher than others for that reason. So it's one of those situations where by subdividing and allowing a separate home to potentially be purchased or built there, it's, I think it's going to have a negative impact on the neighbors and the perceived value of those homes the next time that one of us tries to sell our home. So that's the first reason, and I just want to see if anyone has any questions about that.
I think that trying to gauge home value is somewhat a difficult concept, but I think you should understand that this lot, they have the ability to put two, to knock down a historic home and put two homes on there by right. And what they're attempting to do, as I understand it, is to maintain the historic house that's been there since 1888 and, of course, put a second house on there. But they would have the right to do that in a different, slightly different format by right. That means that the township just arbitrarily can't come in and say, you're not allowed to do that. You just can't.
Right, I understand that. And it seems like there is a viable option where they could have two homes, to your point, that could be constructed within the given ordinances and bylaws within our township. And so we're asking, they're asking for a variance, which I think would be, have a negative impact on the home values.
The variance is to give you a deeper backyard so to keep the house closer to the street.
The variance is also to have properties and homes closer, single-family homes closer than they're permitted inside the zone, the district, so.
But you're, I'm more commenting on your point that you had wanted your backyards open. So they're trying to push it forward. So regardless of whether it's two houses on one property or a split, they're trying to keep it forward. So I was just addressing your comment about wanting a backyard. I don't think they're, I think they're trying to maintain that for you.
I think by building a second home, it will have a negative impact on the privacy and the view, the quietness that we have in our backyard currently. So regardless of the option, I think it would have a negative. Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay, could you comment on stormwater, your stormwater management issue?
Yes, yes. So I'm glad you asked about that. One of the things that I thought was interesting is that they, the Flins commented that their home is not in a situation where it's affected by, where their property is not affected by flooding, which is not true when we had floods back on August 12th of 2018. They certainly appeared to have water in their yard. It may not, it didn't touch their home, but it seems that flooding is a much larger issue than it's been presented as. So overall, I think that the township has allowed variances time and time again to build houses that have had a negative impact on stormwater management, and it's led to some situations with flooding. And it's probably the most commonly discussed topic, I think, within the township at these meetings is stormwater management. So there's a few things that I want to point out. So first of all, it is Gulf Creek, which is...
Let me just interrupt you for a second, I'm sorry. We're only being asked to recommend whether or not we think that the zoning board should grant the variance or variances that have been requested. And the zoning board will have its own hearing, and they make the final determination. So you might want to keep that in mind and make sure you go to that hearing.
I will.
Secondly, on stormwater management, we're not here tonight considering stormwater management. We haven't been asked to consider it. But we will because this will come back to us in our role that we play under the Municipality's Planning Code whenever it comes to subdivisions and land use, this type of land use. And this is going to be deemed a subdivision because they're splitting the lot.
Right.
So we're going to come back and see it at that point. And that's when we talk about stormwater management and other issues that concern you.
Okay. Shall I continue?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, so it is, according to FEMA, a flood plain A, so it's the highest risk and the most costly flooding zone. So in this situation, building another structure so large and so close to a known flooding stream is a challenge. So it's one of those scenarios where I think greater thought needs to be put towards what the impact of subdividing and building additional structures will be on stormwater management. I understand that the impervious percentage has been met, but any sort of subdivision and additional structure will have a negative impact on stormwater management. Regardless of what engineers show, there'll just be more water going downhill. It's so close to that stream. So I think that's going to definitely be a scenario where it's going to increase risk and decrease safety of the community. It's going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. I also want to call out that, the fact that the number of trees on the property, so my property is less than a quarter of the size, and we have...
Again, I have to say that trees, the number of trees, what happens to existing trees, Matt can address how, the Shade Tree Commission will address that, that this issue is not before the Shade Tree Commission at this particular point. They hold public hearings. Those things can be voiced there. When it comes back to us again, as I indicated earlier, we take the recommendations of the Shade Tree Commission and what residents have to say on the issue of trees because it all ties into the overall picture of, well, aesthetics, of course, aesthetics, but of course, the stormwater management. So you're, well, you're certainly free to tell us these things. You're better saving your firepower for a point in time when we're actually considering these issues.
Okay, so that's, I think that's primarily my feedback. I don't know if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, good evening. Laura Gill, I'm at 244 North Aberdeen, so I'm directly to the right of the open lot. I think most of the comments either my neighbor James made or, to your point, can be discussed at other meetings. But there was a comment made by Ms. Flynn earlier in the meeting that most of the neighbors were positive about the change. I'm experiencing the complete opposite. Everybody that I have talked to in my neighborhood about it is against it. They feel that it's going to overcrowd the neighborhood, that it's going to cause problems with street parking, even though they are proposing to have a shared driveway. There are still guests. My parents have to park two blocks away sometimes when they just want to come over for dinner. So there are a lot of concerns that we have as direct neighbors to this property. I think, again, a lot of it can be discussed in the zoning meeting, but I did want to make that one comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment? Does the, any member of the board, the commission feel that we need to revisit this and revote, or shall we stay with where we are?
I think it's probably appropriate to revote because you should hear public comment before the vote's taken and it corrects that.
Okay.
I know typically I feel like when we've had cases like this, that the public comment has to be considered and they have to do some sort of, like either a signing of a petition or something in the neighborhood that helps us to understand what kind of support there is and what the concerns are. So if there's any sort of recommendation for approval, it needs to be contingent on a little bit more fact gathering, maybe?
At this point in time, I think we're just being asked to recommend what the zoning people ought to do afterwards.
Right, so in other words, ask for, you know, we recommend with, how would I say it, maybe, how we've had it in the past, where we've had people comment on, like to sort of neighbor support, some type of letter or something that maybe she gets signed for the zoning hearing board that, with neighbor support or something like that, or some sort of, you know, whenever we do architectural updates or historic things, we go to get neighbor support and we have people sign that they've read the information and can provide some additional support.
I think it's always a good idea, whether you're the applicant, to show the support of the neighbors or the protestants, to show the opposition of the neighbors, to, nothing beats having bodies in the room, but short of that, letters to the zoning hearing board indicating support's always a good idea, too. That would be a recommendation, not necessarily like a codified part of the motion.
Now, we've heard the recommendation from our council, and you should take that to heart. Can I have a motion?
I move that we recommend to the zoning board that they approve the lot width and the front yard setback. I think it's consistent with the neighborhood. It's in line with the rest of the houses, and so I move that we support the variance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Well, my droning on was interrupted. I was just about to say that there's a memo that I drafted after Stephen and Nick and I spoke, and it, and after we made changes to the ordinance, that kind of focuses your attention on certain issues. It might be a good place to start the conversation.
Okay. And this memo, I think, has been shared with Nick?
Yes, I have it.
So do you want to start with number one? Just go through them one at a time?
Do you want me to go, or do you want?
Asking, I'm asking you.
Okay.
So the highlighted area of our solicitor's memo was, there were a number of comments regarding the structural integrity of the building, the outside steps and food prep. My thought was, whoever the applicant may be, our code should be solely the thing that dictates these items. And for us to add to that might bring exposure to the township. So just like any other project that goes on, whatever building codes, electrical codes, my recommendation is that is what should be put forth. The building, the addition, whatever goes on should be met, should meet those codes. I don't think we need to add anything about structural integrity because that's what our codes are there for, to make sure that the building is safe and sound. And our professional building code inspectors verify that in the field.
Yeah, and I think that was Steve's point when we talked was that those particular considerations, the food prep, the, you know, and the building integrity, they were protected by our codes. They're strict, they work, and us trying at a planning commission level to address standards in excess of those would be ineffective.
And this is in item one that talks about the building outside...
the coverings over the stairs and so forth. Our codes dictate what needs to be done. My recommendation is, we don't go inside or outside of those codes and just say, "Meet the code." And that's why they were designed. They were designed by professionals, and they're inspected by professionals.
Nick, anything?
No, we agree with that. We, again, was an item that we did speak about, and the codes in round are pretty extensive as to requirements for such things. So we felt that they would suffice itself. Instead of us trying to draft language, that would be probably just mimic those codes.
Any comment from the commissioners on item number one?
You know, I brought up a number of those issues, only because I'm familiar with them. But I never kind of intended for the, any new ordinance include those. I mean, it's well-covered by any of the building codes and that we have in effect, so.
Okay. I think item number two, which is owner-operator, it states that the ordinance has been revised to require that the rooftop facility be operated by the operator of the downstairs restaurant. You reported, Nick, that the owner might be different, but the operator will be the same.
Correct. For example, the owner of the property here is the Hempshire Family Partnership. The operator of the restaurant is, I believe, Great American Pub of Wayne, which really the same principles, but it is a different entity. And in many occasions in Wayne, the owner of the property is a landlord, and the restaurant owner or operator is really the tenant. So this covers that. You can't have someone else using the roof deck dining that's not associated with the restaurant itself. It's really that restaurant that would be operating the roof deck dining.
Along that line, I did have a thought is, well, is it contemplated that the rooftop restaurants, and maybe you're experiencing Concha Hockin can answer this. Of course, you're in a four-story building in Concha Hockin, is that right? Would you have parties and weddings and receptions and things on the roof, something that's going to generate more noise than normal, perhaps? Has it been thought about at all?
Yeah, I know they don't have them in...
Number three deals with umbrellas and roof coverings. Again, is that something that the ordinance already addresses, or is there, I see there's a recommendation that the umbrellas not be permitted on the roof because they become projectiles?
Well, we actually, the Hempshires were the ones who said, "No umbrellas," because they tried it in Concha Hockin, and it just wasn't working. They removed them. And so that's where they had the shade sails that you have pictures of. So these are the shade sails. I think you have photos of them.
Who's your vendor for those shade sails, to be able to learn more about them?
Bill Stoppie's the guy that installed them.
Bill Stoppie?
Redding, yes.
Okay.
He's a guy at Brumall, but he doesn't do shade sails exactly. He does more tents. But this guy came down from Redding to do it for us.
And then the only other thing, if we're talking about, you know, roof coverings, the bar in Concha Hockin, again, you have this photograph, this covers the bar, and that's actually, or fiberglass, I guess, so it's see-through, or plexiglass that you can actually see through the top there. But that's what it appears like. It's not, it is a permanent structure over the bar, but it doesn't, it's not, you know, something that has walls or not your typical roof-type structure. And when we were speaking on the phone the other day, remember, anything you would put on there anyway would be limited by the height regulations of the zoning code. For example, the pub right now could put a second story probably there, and it would be limited by the height regulations. Not that they would do it, Chuck just made a face when I mentioned that, but, you know, that's basically something they could do, again, with structural integrity. I know they're not intending to do it, but it's all governed by the zoning code as it exists today.
And the, these can, whatever they're made out of, these, what do you call these things?
Shade sails.
These will be taken down when the rooftop restaurant ceases operation for the season?
Yes, the shade sails can be taken down. The actual structure that you see there, the plexiglass structure does remain.
That remains.
And the only thing is, I noticed when Mary marked it up, under 53.16A3, now you say canopies are on, doesn't say you can't have. 16A3, and this is Mary's red line. It says, "Umbrella should not be permitted on the roof," which is not an issue. Then canopies or awnings may be used to protect people and personal property from the elements, which is fine also. And doesn't, I don't think we're banning this type of item under that language.
At the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission specifically said that, or at least some comments on the planning commission, were that no permanent structures would be acceptable. And I think that the planning commission probably needs to discuss whether or not they think that's acceptable. And if it is, we can include something like that in the ordinance, but first, we'd have to have a recommendation from you guys.
Yeah, I don't think, Mary, I don't think the intent, at least right now, was to exclude those, correct? The way I read it, the language does not exclude a permanent structure. Was that?
It doesn't specifically exclude it, but the memo asked the planning commission for their thoughts on that.
Okay.
So the permanent structure would be...
Correct.
Right here. Okay. So everybody have the photograph? Okay, it's up there on the... And so that's something for us to discuss, whether or not that's...
Nick, just one question on that permanent structure. Are you putting, like, in the winter, do walls, or does that?
No.
It doesn't get enclosed at all?
No, it doesn't get enclosed at all. Now, remember, though, the bathrooms, I think there's photographs of the bathrooms, which obviously are enclosed.
Staff supports that.
Yeah, they're, they're tast... I know we have pictures. I may, yeah, I think you see one of those, you see it, under the shade sail. Right. 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 You see one his, and then it's a mimic on the other side is hers. And that is, again, is another point. They are located in the rear of the building, the way the building is situated. But remember, and actually, Concha Hockin's the same thing. They're on a corner, they're a corner property in Concha Hockin, as is the one in Wayne. But you have West Avenue and North Wayne. The front of the building really is North Wayne. And so the proposal, just like they are in Concha Hockin, where the front is Fayette Street, these structures are in the rear, but it depends on what you consider the rear, you know, because we technically have two front yards, but it is the rear of how the principal building is oriented. So, you know, maybe that's just some language tweak we can make so that it's not confusing or ambiguous.
Where were that?
That was, I know I circled it, it was number 10, new number 10, 53.16, new number 10. And it says, "In order to limit visibility from the street, elevators and restrooms shall be located at the rear of the rooftop," which I think we get, and we agree with the theory behind it, is just how do you determine rear?
I mean, it's an interesting drafting question.
The zoning code actually, when you're talking about a corner yacht, a corner lot, refers to the rear yard as the yard from which the building, the rear of the building is oriented. I believe that's the language in the zoning code. They actually use that language here. In the definition of yard, the rear lot line shall be designated as that lot line towards which the rear of the principal building is oriented. So perhaps just the rear being the rear of where the principal building is oriented, or some language to that effect. Because no one wants them in the front, so.
Well, we'll just have to make some notes on that, and then see what council can come up with in terms of drafting, or maybe a reference to whatever that part of the...
Code is.
That code is that you just mentioned. Let's go back to...
Sure, I'm sorry to jump ahead, but it just kind of...
Back to item, that's three, right?
Right.
I guess the question really becomes for the board, are we comfortable or uncomfortable with having something, this is over the bar, correct? Something like this permitted over a bar area?
I guess my thought on this is, I feel like, I actually feel a little uncomfortable making design decisions within the ordinance to that degree of specificity. I think we should actually decide in more general terms what we want, instead of putting specifics in the ordinance, and then create another step in the process if there is an approval for a specific. But it seems like those approvals are already in place. And so maybe we could actually just simplify number three.
Yeah, I think, well, what we were looking for was, in light of the fact that they have something like this in Concha Hockin, do you want a prohibition against permanent structures in the ordinance? Or do you want to leave that open for design possibilities?
I think you should leave it open. And as long as it complies with the, and stays within the zoning envelope of the building and complies with building codes, I think it should be fine.
Megan, was that what you were saying?
I would agree. Yes.
And this would have to go to Design Review Board, so would be a township.
I think the only thing that really comes to mind for me is, I don't have a problem with putting a roof on something, but the connections and how, this is where there might have to be something in the code about how often it has to be inspected, like a condition assessment before use each year, because if those connections come loose over the winter, or they aren't, if this were to fail and this rooftop were to get caught in a storm, the devastation below could be pretty substantial. So there maybe needs to just be an opportunity for a regular maintenance or a condition assessment done each year before it opens up to ensure the structural integrity of the connections.
I think Mary had that in there somewhere. I think every year...
For, even it went to the planning commission. Steve had that in there, that it's not in, it's at the very last sections that they have to get each, you know, that's enforcement, but...
All locations shall be subject to periodic inspections for compliance with the standards of this section. So whatever that building code is, again, which, you know, our codes cover everything, whatever that period is, whether it be, you know, annually, come spring before it opens up, that, you know, they bring our codes folks in, or someone, or some other entity to provide information to our codes folks. Again, I think our codes cover all that. You're just asking for, to make sure there's compliance with those codes all the time.
Right. It's a new, we're introducing a new use, and therefore, yes, inspectors can come in anytime and check on things, but it's, we're looking at a situation that is a little different. And so it's, I feel like maybe it might need a little bit more of a periodic inspection, or at least beginning of each year. I mean, that's what I typically find with things that are open, anytime I've been involved in something that's open.
I think to add that an annual pre-opening inspection, I don't think that's something the applicant would be against. And we have to also realize that it may not just be this applicant, right? There's conceivably other folks who are going to do this who have their own restrictions, but they're following the code. So if that becomes a good rule, you know, prior to the whatever, March opening, that inspection would be set up, and they can't move forward until they get the clean bill of health, so to speak.
Just a question on that point. It says that it has to be in compliance with the standards of this section. Now, is that broad enough? Is there...
Well, if you look at, CD, or C, E, and F all work together. So E kind of provides for an annual reissuance of the permit, which would allow an opportunity to inspect on an annual basis. And C, too, includes as part of the permitting process to, you know, review with Community Development Department to make sure that the safety regulations are in place. So because the permit's going to be renewed on an annual basis, it gives an opportunity for inspection on an annual basis.
So the idea is going to, I think, on item, again, going back to item three, about umbrellas not being permitted on the roof and so on, that the questions regarding whether or not there should be a permanent structure, not being a permanent structure, is going to be left to design considerations and the design committee, which is already in the code. Okay. So does there need to be a change in the language of, I'm looking at the red line version, under item three?
I'll go back and look at that once the planning commission's finished its comments. I, yeah, there's, I don't think there's a specific provision in here. I don't remember putting one in.
I don't think there is. I just circled that, just, and then thinking about, and reading it later, there was nothing in here banning.
Right.
It just said, the only ban was really on umbrellas, which we agree.
Which means other things can be explored per the code.
Right.
Okay. Well, on proportion of the seats, which is item four, proportion of seats, limit the number of bar and lounge seats to 25% of the total rooftop dining seats. Any issues regarding that? Number five is parking. Parking has not been highlighted, but I think everybody from their last meeting seems to be all on the same page regarding parking. Is that correct? The next item, of course, is lighting.
So on this one, Mr. Lord, again, we have an ordinance, so when, if they were to come through, they have to provide that photometric diagram, which was where they have to prove that there's no spillover on the property line. So, I mean, there's no harm in keeping it in here, but that, too, is already covered. So we're not allowing that, whether, again, I, to the point that was previously made about getting down to design elements, like that you must use low-level lighting, my thought is, use whatever lighting you wish, but comply with the ordinance, have no spillover. If they need to use low-level lighting to do that, their architect will put that forth. If they don't, their architect will put that forth. But they have to comply.
Yeah, I thought about this a lot. Like, we had our conversation, I did the memo, and then even after the memo, I, it isn't, I don't know what low-level lighting is. When they say low-level lighting, I think of that dimly lit stuff that you put around for decorative, and that seemed to worry me in terms of safety in a bar. But then I was thinking, what makes light the most obnoxious in, on a rooftop bar? And that would be lights high on poles. So I think if anything would be low, the height of the lights should probably be limited to the, like, the height of the building. So if you had, if that structure could go over the bar and still be within the building height, you wouldn't want lights that, that were 15 feet taller than everything else. That would seem to me to be what would capture people's attention more than anything. I don't know how you feel about that, Steve?
So, again, I guess we spent a lot of time on lighting with Villeneuve University when they came... they came through here. And there were certain items, like, you can't see the fixture, there's items on glare. So, good, bad, or indifferent, our ordinance does cover items like that. So I, I don't believe you could have a light that was 15 feet high, because I would be able to look up and see the, the bulbs, so to speak. So again, whatever the Planning Commission wishes to do, but I think our lighting code says zero spillover, no glare, no seeing the actual fixture when you look up. I think, to your point, we get, we start to get into design details. We have designers on the commission, but that's, I think that's beyond what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to say, hey, this is what you can, these are your limitations. Now you go to your architect, your design professional, and work within those limitations. And that's, any applicant that appears before you for this are going to be business owners that have to do their due diligence and say, does this work for me within those design requirements?
Emergency service inspection and recommendation is item seven. I think we're pretty much all in agreement on item seven.
Yeah.
We've already talked about the location of elevators in the restrooms, which is item eight. Ordinance has been revised to include a requirement that elevators and restrooms be located towards the rear of the roof. And there, and Mary is going to look into, I think, some way of perhaps sharpening up how the rear of the building is defined.
Especially in the situation for, where there's a corner lot.
Yes, yes. Excuse me.
The location of the bar-
Yes.
This was another issue where, at staff level, we thought maybe we were getting too far down in the weeds dictating the location of the bar. And then I happened to have dinner with my son, who the night before was at your Conshohocken facility. So I took every opportunity to grill him. And he said-
He loved it, right?
What?
He loved it.
Oh, he did. He said it was great and it wasn't noisy, it wasn't, you know, like, I asked him all the relevant questions. But he said, the one thing, he looked and he thought, gee, you wouldn't want to get in a fight with somebody up here, because you could get thrown over the railing. So then I thought, me, like, that's when we started talking about maybe moving this tables back a little bit from the railing, so that there'd be some space, so that they weren't right up against the railing, to just like, a little bit of a safety buffer. Not that my son gets in bar fights, I'm not suggesting that.
Again, to pick up on what Steve was saying earlier, I, I thought there's some fairly substantial code regulations that really define what you have got to have to satisfy the, the, the building requirements for-
Yeah, I was not suggesting-
Parapets.
I wasn't suggesting tinkering with the existing requirements for height of railings. Just having a little bit of space between the railing and the, and the patrons might not be a terrible idea. But then again, that was completely arbitrary, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Again, I don't know how, that, that seems to me to create some enforcement issues and inspection issues. People move their tables around, the chairs around, and-
Just looking, they're close. I mean, just looking at Conchi, I know we were close to a railing the night we were there. It probably was within five feet, I would guess.
Yes.
And I thought it was more maybe for the bar. The bar, to get the bar in the middle, which of course, from a design standpoint, is the idea anyway.
I know, I, I wouldn't think that, that the, the relative safety of the location of the, of the tables is necessarily known. So that probably wouldn't, wouldn't be something of a concern more than, it, it seems, again, more of a design issue. And the Conshohocken location is much higher, right, than most of the buildings in downtown Wayne. So I think that's a little bit, probably, the comparison doesn't need to be directly made between those two situations either.
Well, right now, I think, I'm looking at the memo and it says that, right now, or it says, "We have also required that no seating be permitted within five feet of the edge of the roof." And then there's a question about, what do you think about centering of the bar?
We will get rid of the, item, you know, it's not, it's, I think, like, I'm hearing from the Planning Commission that maybe we don't need the restriction on seats within five feet of the roof, which still leaves just the centering.
Does that, but I'm going to switch the, the way we look at it. As restaurant owners, when you're on a rooftop deck and you've got people who are drinking and little kids who like to stand up in chairs, do you feel nervous when your tables are too close to the edge and you feel like you have to babysit patrons? Is it better to pull it back to save yourself a little bit of worry? Or do you not worry about that stuff? Like, am I just being a mom?
We haven't had any, any problem whatsoever. The railings are all 42 inches of code, so.
But I mean, I've, I've seen a lot, and sometimes you have to design for one of those crazy people that just decides that maybe it's fun to take a selfie and stand up in the chair because all his friends are behind him, or, you know, a kid wants to pretend he's flying his airplane. A lot of things happen.
You have that with multifamily properties here, where, you know, where several, several floors above grade. So I, I think it's the same type of principle.
Well, yeah, but if you were writing a zoning ordinance and you had an opportunity to relieve the people who are providing the service of a worry, is it better to leave it in or take it out? So I'm just looking at it from a different perspective.
Yeah. I'm just saying, it's like, if the code is, was it, Sarge, what did you say, 42 feet?
Yeah, 42 inches.
I'm sorry, 42 inches.
Yeah.
I think that, that's going back to, with what Steve, with what you were saying earlier on, is that the code itself for built, for, for building is, the ordinance is already in place.
So I'll go to what Mr. Lord said. How do you enforce that? So if you, there are professional designers on this board, so if you say that the table must be six feet from the edge, so therefore the chairs, so when I come and, you know, I move my chair back and my kid's in front of me or whatever, again, I don't know, my thought is, from a design standpoint, the same with the center. This applicant wants their bar in the center. We don't know what a future applicant may want. We don't know what the design of their building rooftop may be. So my, my just, my recommendation is, again, all these items fall back on the applicant, that this is what they feel they can make a going concern. So whether the bar is slightly forward or slightly rear, plus the restrooms, plus ADA access, plus ADA compliant restrooms, all this takes away from other dining seating. So my, my thought would be to leave that to the architects to decide where it goes, how many seats they can fit in. You folks decide the aisle width, you, and you, and then our codes people are going to give it a legal rating for the number of people that can be up there. So I don't, I'm not just looking at this applicant, I'm looking at what may be future applicants, and not to hamstring them from a design standpoint.
So, so just to go back to the issue of where you put the bar and centering it, I, I think the last time we met, it wasn't so much of a safety concern just for the bar, but it was also the-
It was aesthetics.
It was the aesthetics, that you don't want to have the bar hanging over the front of the building, you know, that you can see it from the street level as well as-
And, and you can make, you know, whether it be a setback, and that's your folks' call. And I don't know, again, from a business standpoint, you lose the whole rooftop thing if you have a structure that's up front. So I don't know that anybody would want to do that. But if you wish to note that this applicant wants to do it, I'm just thinking of, of other ones. But if that's what the will of the Planning Commission, then, or to have it so many feet back, or, you know, 30% back so that it, it's not up front.
I'm not sure what the answer is, because, I mean, if you put the bar, if you center the bar theoretically, I guess you can get, it's more efficient, probably, for a lot of reasons, but, you know, once again-
If I were a restaurant owner and-
Managing and designing restaurants, which is really not our job.
Right, and that's like, so if I'm a restaurant owner and I wish to have it closer to the rear, and you're, these folks are designing for me, and they're like, this really works with your setup, with the outline. I just, again, we have codes, we have design standards, there's professionals that do that. I work from ground level down, so I'm not going to even comment on that.
But there, there's language in the ordinance that, that will effectively restrict the size of the bar. So I think we're, I think it's fine to leave the placement of the bar to the decision of the applicant to fit their individual needs. Okay. Much on the same page?
Number 10 is compliance with noise.
I mean, again, Steve, it's already in the code, so there's not much for us to, to talk about that. Heaters are number 11. I think last time we were all pretty much agreed that they have to, they can't be operated by propane, no open flames, that sort of thing. So they, it would have to be some sort of a, I guess, electric type of heater. We have to also incorporate some of the applicable heater requirements from the outdoor dining section of the ordinance. I'm not sure how we left all that. My recollection was it was just going to be no propane.
Right, but in your outdoor dining section, you had a number, probably seven or eight regulations specifically regarding outdoor heaters. Some of them did not apply to rooftop, because it talked about, you know, sidewalks and not blocking pedestrian walkability. But then there were some that I thought maybe you want to consider. Be in compliance with the, with the fire code, not be located closer than 10 feet from a means of egress or, or ingress to the roof, so you didn't get up to the top of the stairs and, and kick over a heater. Where possible, heaters shall be securely fastened to the wall or floor, so that they're, so that they don't tip over. That's directly from the zoning ordinance, outdoor dining section. And it seemed not only consistent, but, but a pretty good idea. But again, you're the policymakers.
I think you have to have some sort of heaters, or you're not going to be able to use it except in part of June, July, and August. It's going to be uncomfortable.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. I, I don't think we, the last time we talked about this, I thought we were all pretty much in agreement that propane heaters were out, but there were other types of heaters-
Other types, other types.
That were available, but, electric heaters?
We had no problem with how this is currently warranted for outdoor heaters. I mean, and it says no propane, and then it talks about being properly secured, not located closer to 10 feet from a means of ingress or regress, and compliance with international fire code. So it's all-
I think we're all okay with number 11 regarding heaters. Food prep, the last time there was some discussion regarding open flames and what was the level of food prep that was going on, on the roof? The note says, the, the memo says, "The ordinance is drafted to prohibit food prep with an open flame."
And I guess-
And some of us at the last meeting seemed to have some reservations about any food prep at all on the roof, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we definitely need food prep. You know, I guess the question is, isn't anything cooked with an open flame? I mean-
Yeah, and my memo doesn't accurately reflect Steve's position on this, which is that all food prep somehow involves an open flame, whether it's contained or in element or-
I'm not familiar with what goes on in the kitchen, but those flat grill tops, I'm assuming they're heated with a flame from underneath, right? So it's, it is a flame, it's not open, and again, and my thought is, our codes dictate, I think I understand, you know, you, the Planning Commission is talking like if there was grills up there, like, open grills with-
Yeah, I think that's what we were thinking about.
You know, flames and embers that could fly. I'm not real well-versed on commercial kitchen equipment. I don't know, again, and I'm not just thinking of this applicant, I'm thinking of future applicants, what dictates an open flame? So if a flame heats an oven, is that an open flame? I don't think so. It's, it's in the oven, or it's under the grill. My thought was, I don't know that you should, again, my opinion, from the Planning Commission's standpoint, do you want to limit food prep, or do you just want to limit the open flame? Because again, to me, that's up to the business owner to make, to see if this is a viable option for them. And again, the more food prep they have, the less seats they have. So that's a decision they have to make with their design architect to say, okay, we want X square feet of whatever kitchen-type apparatus, well, guess what, you just lost two tables. That's, that's a, that's a decision for an applicant to make, in my opinion.
It says on the memo, "At staff level, we think that the fire code and emergency service review may be able to address this issue more effectively than we can." Now, it's like an excellent idea, is that, is that what you're suggesting, that we should go that route?
Yeah, it is. So I, I, we could talk to our code officials and, I don't know, and maybe some of the designers up on the board could tell us, you know, from that standpoint, is there a pro, is there a prohibition on that? Because who knows what the next applicant may want to do up on that rooftop, is, you know? Again, I think our codes dictate, I would think.
Nick, any input on that point?
I, I would tend to think the codes would dictate also. I will give you an example. They have these fireplaces here, and they are run, I believe, by a gas flame, I was told this evening, not propane.
Jim, could you zoom in on that? Because I have no idea what Mr. Caneli is pointing to.
Up there on the rooftop, it, I'll get it. Not in there, Jim.
Too blurry. There you go, there's a fireplace.
Yeah, it's like a fireplace, is all it is. It, it, where's the, I guess the-
It's water in the back, flame in the front.
Is the flame behind the glass?
Flame in the front, and the water comes down the back of that stone wall.
Okay.
Yes, the girls stand. There's that 10-inch piece of glass goes around it. It's hard, everything's hard piped. There's, there's heaters on there, the hard pipe. And the flames are enclosed in glass.
Just, I just wanted to give you an example of, you know, the question regarding open flame, you know, is that an open flame or not an open flame? And that's why I think actually it's better to have the code people determine whether it complies with code or not, and safe, and fire code.
The facility has to have the fire suppression system, and that's part of code.
Again, going back to what we discussed earlier, I think we're getting, I'm getting the sense that we already have in our codes the, the language that will enable the, the code enforcement people to make sure that things are being done appropriately and within the code. All right, so there's no sense reinventing the wheel on that one. And finally, fees.
Finally, that, you can just cross off 13. I misread the, the ordinance. They, both of the, those sections, which have been renumbered since I drafted the memo, require payment of fees at the time of filing of the application, which is appropriate.
So I think we're at the point where do we, do we feel comfortable making, with someone making a, proposing that we approve the ordinance as redrafted, or should we wait for a final draft and take one more, one more look at it with what we have incorporated? Because we have the redline, and then we've got Mary's version that is not redlined, but there seems like there might be a couple of things at it or clarified.
It seems like we were all in pretty much agreement, though. Couldn't we just approve or recommend approval based on the comments that were recorded tonight?
Think it's clean enough that we can go at that point, go, go now at that point to-
That is absolutely your option.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, recommend approval of the rooftop dining ordinance with the comments of tonight's meeting and Mary's comments.
Do I hear a second?
No, second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
And Mary, just so, I think perhaps redrafting, I think we're going to leave, I'm, Mary and I can speak.
There, there's some cleanup that you got, like the five-foot, I think the two, the two attorneys can do that.
Thank you, thanks for your time again.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me take your bag for you. Okay, that's there.
Okay, that's there.
Well, then I hear a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much, we're adjourned.